Order for February twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. I'm gonna ask Jim Jenkins to come up first, then I'm gonna do the two public comments, and then on the Buddy Brad Show. Jim, go ahead.
So I just request this out to be put on the agenda. This is to discuss the Grove Cedar Hills. As you know, there's a stop work order placed so that permits can no longer be obtained. At this point, you know, the only thing I need to do was ask the developer to go out, have an engineer assess the site. That has been done. It was requested, was it a commission meeting to check about bonds and things of that nature? You know, I've talked to Josh Roger with the state, who handles erosion settlement controls in these developments. We can require bonds, but we don't have a regulation for that. So we're at the beginning of development rather than at the beginning of the development. If we have a regulation in place, we can go above the state, require bonds for things of this nature for erosion settlement controls, things of that nature. In our zoning regulations under erosion settlement control, basically, if I disturb the earth, I'm responsible for your maintenance. If I have to come back and do any type of remediation after that, corrective action, responsibility for a month or two. Basically, to allow time for it to get in, get established, so we address these concerns. That is in our zoning resolution. As far as enforcement, I guess it would be like anything else. If through a violation, we'd have to work through a violation through our office, and if they refuse to remediate, then we'd have to take it to the county attorney.
So every time an issue with erosion control that we address, does the county reset the one year timer?
So if we have a development, you know, or if it's something we're responsible for, and I've got, you know, I've got the growth coming in and everything looks good. For some reason, it comes out, it washes it out within that year timeframe, I would look at that as saying, you've got to come back in and correct it, let the vegetation grow, and be responsible for another year to see that that doesn't occur. That's the way I believe it is written and meant to be.
How do you enforce that? How would you make a developer that's already scooted out of town come back and fix the mess he left?
Absolutely. So the only way we'd be able to enforce it, it'd be a little unique on a development, and I would agree, because ultimately, this becomes common property by the subdivision, it becomes the property owners, right? So I would think in a circumstance, you'd have to know who the developer is, their contact, send them letters of notification, refusal to work in that manner, we'd have to work through Bob off the top.
Ultimately, have to take them court.
Ultimately, I believe so. If they did want to do it, I would agree with them, yes.
Let's just talk about the slope on the south side of the growth. If that does not take, even though it's private land at that point, the developer still responsible for that?
I believe the developer would be responsible for that for a year until it was established as the developer. I've not looked into it far enough, to be honest with you. I've not talked to Bob, saying, well, if the property is sold, and now changed hands, so that property in particular goes all the way to the property line, right? There is no comment that I know of. So who's responsible for it at that point? That honestly couldn't answer to.
That's a big question.
So many, but does it become that property owner's individual responsibility? Quite possibly it would, and if that was the case, that's who we'd chase. And then, I guess from there, it would be up to them whether they chase the developer that didn't work. I've not looked far enough into that for that question.
Did you say, Jim, we could or could not require a bond?
We, on this one, I don't, I would not think we could. We don't have any regulations for bonding stuff of this. You know, we have.
But we're going to, though. We're getting there.
We, yeah, we had bonds, you know, so if I looked in the development, I could bond utilities that aren't completed or roadways that are not completed, things of that nature. Let's say we're not done at this time, or the top code later, we're gonna bond that over. We have that in order. We don't currently have anything to bond additional erosion settlement. Outside the MS four, that is the state's review. They look at erosion settlement, they hold the SWIP until eighty percent coverage. That developer, or whoever the SWIP holder is, he has to be released from that SWIP by the state stating everything is in, stabilized and applied. But we don't have any other extra means of enforcement.
But we can.
We can't put that in our regs.
I have one in my district. The development is now twenty-plus years old, and there was another development right beside of it, highway seventy, just above Wofford.
Yep.
The developer came in, scratched it all up, made a horrendous mess, walked away, and Jim and I have been trying now for several years to make him do it. And every time we get a good rain, they flood three, four houses downstream, every time. And so far, we have not been able to make anybody do anything. The state won't make them do anything, we can't make them do anything. In the meantime, the neighbors are all getting washed away every time we get rain.
And in that case, obviously, we can't make them do anything because the state has to do it on our end. I can say this, if there was a bond in place, it's adequate enough that if someone wants that money released, then that might encourage someone to come in and do the ground cover so that they can have it bond released.
That's what we're talking about in this particular area.
We do not have that at this time. Just looking for, I guess, trying to get this kind of issue resolved.
I've seen, I've seen the property, the backside where the issue is, and I know that a lot of the matting they put down is already washing out, it's not taking hold. I know that if you have the silt fence, three feet on either side have not been touched in terms of vegetation, attempt to grow vegetation. So those are some issues. I'd also like some rip wrap on that backside where it comes down before it hits the Robin's property.
So, so in relaying this information to look at, trying to think out loud.
He's sitting right there. You're making way, now.
I'm trying to resolve to see what we're looking for to take it to release the stop work so we can obtain the additional four permits. Your request is rip wrap along the bottom slot slope.
There's about four house, four lots widths right there, yep. And again, there's still a bunch of dirt that needs to be covered with straw, matting, whatever it is.
I got nuts, Jim.
So what timeframe were you thinking? I mean.
Two weeks, we're gonna vote on it, so it's got two weeks.
He's got two weeks to.
Yeah.
We're gonna put this on March fourth, right?
Assuming the work's done, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I want it done with. I don't want to deal with this anymore.
Absolutely.
But at the same time, I want it addressed correctly. And once they get those four permits, what do we got, you know?
We got no more help.
If that's it, I'll relay this information and do my best to verify this work for our two March fourth vote. If it's on that, Jim.
Hey, I'll put it on March fourth agenda with the hopes that we can resolve this issue and move on.
Could the contractor voluntarily do a bond for a year or two?
I'm sure they could voluntarily do that.
Talk to him about that too, if you would. Thank you.
Jim, get with him right there. He's up there.
Thank you all.
Okay. It'll be on March fourth.
Thank you.
Can I, with the first voting, ask a question or two?
It's a workshop. It's up to the chairman.
What's that now?
He would like to come up and speak. It's a workshop.
Yeah.
No, please. You're on the agenda.
So, thank you, John Cook, for those of you that don't know me. As far as the straw matting, you know, it's been winter, so straw matting doesn't hold grass initially grew during winter. There is a lot of grass coming up back there. I would address with Jim, the straw matting needs to be taken care of. That's something we would typically do in spring. Again, all of this area falls underneath our SWIP permit, which has not been released. We haven't asked for it to be released. The SWIP permit is a state permit that we pay for when we obtain a permit, and we pay every year that is in place, okay? We have to pay for that, I think it's about, and that property is about $2,000 a year. We have to read up that, and they continue to inspect, okay? So that silt fence you're talking about back there where there's dirt, okay? We have to remove that silt fence. There is no point going in there and stabilizing and doing a whole bunch of work before we remove that silt fence, okay? So the straw matting, the straw, all that, yes. As far as rip wrap, I want to ask you what statute, where are you calling for rip wrap? It's not on the plans, it's in none of Loudoun County regulations. If you're gonna require something, I would ask you, where are you coming up with this requirement? And then furthermore, what is it even doing? And how is it gonna help with stabilization? Because I still gotta get the silt fence out of there somewhere.
I have a problem with the amount of water that's being run off that slope that's been built up twenty-plus feet, accelerating that water down the hill.
We did not build it up twenty, twenty feet. We provided you the plan and showed the original contours and then the as-built contours. So I am just asking again, if you're gonna require us to do something, where, where are you pulling that requirement from?
I'm just asking for something to slow down the water coming from, every gutter on the backside of the property is pointed right down that hillside.
Which is factored in the calculations that were provided by both the original engineer and the third-party engineer that we hired.
That's fine. I'm just asking for some rip wrap.
I'm asking for what regulations I'm working to.
I don't think he's citing a regulation. I think he's asking you to put rip wrap where you created a major problem for your neighbor. I don't think he's telling you there's a law, you had to do anything. I would think you'd want to be a good neighbor to your fellow property owners.
And I do.
I don't think they feel that way, but.
They haven't spoken to us, so I don't know. So he can ask us to put rip wrap. I'll end the conversation, but I'm gonna say again, you can't just ask somebody to do something that is in no regulations whatsoever and force them to do it. It has to be in writing somewhere. Somebody has to say, yep, because this is something you have to do, okay? If the county wants to hire an engineer, have an engineer go out there and tell us, yeah, you need to do rip wrap. Okay, that's a different story, okay? Because then an engineer, qualified professional, was going out there and said, this is an issue, and this is what needs to be done to address it. That's exactly what we did when we were, when we were accused of something. We went out and did exactly what the county asked us to do, got the calculations, provide them to y'all, okay? If you want us to do something different, provide calculations to prove that what we've done is incorrect. That's all I'm asking. Don't ask us to do something we're just pulling out of thin air. I'm not an engineer. I don't know if any of y'all are engineers or not. It frankly doesn't matter, because nobody else is putting their stamp and their name on something. All I can work to is what the drawings are. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'll leave it between you, Jim, and Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Come back on March fourth, we'll see where it goes for a vote. Okay, public comments, Gary Bush.
Good evening, thank you. I wanted to come before you tonight. I know you've, however, as an organization, you've made Loudoun County a sanctuary county, and I wanted to propose something else from here. My name is Gary Bush, and it is spelled with a C, and I'm a thirteen-year citizen of the state of Tennessee. In the last two and a half years, I've lived in Loudoun County. For the past few years, I've gotten engaged in our local and statewide political activities on many fronts, primarily driven to do so because of what I personally believe has been the decromi and overreach of our federal government and actions it has imposed on citizens. With the rapid spread of the global virus and the unexpected populace of our country based on its COVID-19, our federal government agencies and non-elected officials sought to seize that opportunity to lay attack on our individual rights and undercut the core of our existence as free, independent, democratic, democratic republic known as the beacon of the free world. To look back to what may have gotten us to this point, in 2008, then White House Chief of Staff Rahm Emanuel famously quoted the following, "You never want a serious crisis to go to waste," meaning that a crisis can be an opportunity to do the things that were not, were not possible before. However, he was not the first to make this quote. It was actually said by Saul Alinsky, author of Twelve Rules of Wrath for Radicals, quoted in 1971, "A threat for a crisis becomes almost a precondition of communication." Unfortunately, America was and has been asleep for the better part of fifty years, as those factions of our society saw it and have seized their opportunities to grow the central government while limiting the rights and voice of its people. Today has become commonplace for our executive branch of government rules by executive orders. There is a belief that the Bill of Rights, the original ten amendments to the Constitution of the United States are subject to the interpretation of the individual power. Elections have consequences. We've all heard that. I come before you today to say that this approach to governing could not be more, could not be more opposite to the truth, and must be brought back under control. I believe I plead not only for myself, but for many who live in Loudoun County and across the great state of ours, that we're tired with the edicts being pummulated by the federal government in a form of executive orders, which circumvent, which circumvent the legislative process of our beauty, violating the fundamental American doctrine of separation of powers. Whereas Article One, Section One of the Tennessee State Constitution recognizes that all powers are inherent, and the people are founded in their authority and hand. Whereas the Tenth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America's states, the powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution nor prohibited by it to the states, are reserved to the states respectively, or to the people. And whereas federalism protects the liberty of the individual from arbitrary power, and the individual has a direct interest in objecting to laws that upset the constitutional bounds between the national government and the states, when the enforcement of those laws causes injuries to, that is concrete, particular, and repressible. Fidelity to principles of federalism is not for the states alone to vindicate, case law bond versus United States. Whereas the structure, structural principles secured by the separation of powers protect the individual as well. Further, the state of Tennessee is divided into ninety-five various counties and hundreds of municipalities, which by the Tennessee Constitution of TCA, vest counties with such powers of self-government as is provided by general and specific law. Tennessee statutes authorize his counties to adopt ordinances and resolutions necessary to exercise of its powers and perform any other acts not inconsistent with law, which acts are in the common interests of the people of the county and exercise all powers or privileges not specifically prohibited by law. And it is my belief that the state goes even further, providing provisions of the law, which is literally construed for the order to effectively carry out the purposes to secure the county's broad exercise of home rule powers authorized by state constitution. In closing, the U.S. Congress, where the executive branch of the federal government has the authority to commandeer the states to act, Murphy versus National Collegiate Association, the anti-commandeering principle is absolutely categorical. Again, case law prince versus the United States. It's a matter not what, not whether policymaking is involved, in what case by today's reign of the burdens or benefits is necessary. Such commands are fundamentally incompatible with the constitutional systems of dual sovereignty. Also, the county commission acknowledges and affirms that the sheriff is an independent constitutional officer, not work under the authority of this board, but the sheriff's is charged with the duty to enforce county ordinances. Based on all these points and elements, as I would, I would like to make the request as a private citizen of the county of Loudoun, Tennessee, for this board of commissioners to consider the declaration making the county of Loudoun, Tennessee, either a Bill of Rights sanctuary county or a constitutional sanctuary county within the state of Tennessee to the issue of a county resolution. Thank you for your consideration. I have copies of one such resolution from the county of Hawkins, Tennessee.
Gary.
Okay.
How many, how many have done this? How many counties have done this?
There's one in Florida, there's that they've done this, county of Hawkins, and there's other counties looking at it.
Buddy, would you have Bob look at that?
I got copies for off here to take.
Paul Bowman.
Yeah, I mean, it's very similar with our Second Amendment sanctuary county.
I'm not sure of what, what's.
Second Amendment is only protected in the Second Amendment.
Yeah, yeah. It's just our, it's our stand.
Unfortunately, your Second Amendment is, is almost null and void if you're not protecting the other law.
No doubt.
You guys pass him a little faster.
Thank you, sir.
Buddy, have Bob look at it and get back to us. And if it's not a problem, we probably look at it on March fourth.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Gary.
Last time I was here, it was for information, and I promised to return another bond. This time, it's to ask for money.
Time out. Stop swap. Gary's trippin'. Come on, Gary, you tore the chair up, man. I'm glad the doctor's here. Is there a doctor in the house?
As long as he doesn't need three at seventy-six, we're all right.
So let me, I brought two people with me so that the three of us can answer any and all the questions you might have. Pat Jenkins is the dean of health sciences for Rowan State, and she's going to pass out some information.
We got it.
And also Scott Nierman, who is the executive director for the Rowan State Foundation. So the Regional Training Center is a seventy-five million dollar project. I have done some calculations. I think there are about ten counties in and around Knoxville that will be sending their students to this training center. So I'm going to ask today that Loudoun County contribute eighty thousand dollars to this project over three years. Now, I'm more than willing to go through my calculations so you can see the logic of my reasoning, but I don't want to waste your time if you're not interested. Eighty thousand dollars, by the way, represents zero point one percent of the entire budget allocated for this project. So at that, at that point, I'm gonna stop and let you throw slings and arrows at Ms. Jenkins and Mr. Nierman. You can, you can address questions to any of us. And I, last thing, is I've had this conversation with Buddy last week, and so nothing that I've said has surprised us him. Now it's my turn to surprise you. Go ahead.
So you said eighty thousand over three years?
That is correct, sir.
What other counties are contributing?
Well, the, when you look at Knox County, and then the contiguous counties, you can get about, actually, it's eight counties, but I'm counting Knox County double because of its size.
And they've pledged half a million dollars to this recently.
What other counties?
Just Knox County.
That's Knox County.
You're the, you're the next one that we're talking to, will also be talking to municipalities throughout the region.
Right. So in each county, Adam, one person has been designated to be the point person for the Capitol campaign. So I've been asked to do it for this county, but each of the counties has someone designated, and they're pretty much doing the same thing that I'm doing. They're going to the political entities, the county, and the, and the citizen, and the cities, and saying, hey, this is the project. We think this county can come up with half a million dollars. Half a million dollars, forty percent from public entities, sixty percent for private citizens and businessmen. This county, we have three political entities, county and two cities. I'm asking this county to come up with forty percent. Forty percent of two hundred thousand dollars is eighty, eighty thousand dollars.
But to answer the question, it's been asked a couple times, what other counties have given any money thus far? Besides Knox County.
I don't know. I don't coordinate, Scott.
Knox County so far is all that is confirmed thus far.
And then Cumberland County has what?
Well, Cumberland County did give to our expansion at that facility, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, which was.
In Cumberland County?
In Cumberland County. That was for a nursing addition there as well. This is all, of course, I presume in the first conversation that he had, you're aware, this is all to address workforce needs, to upsize our cohorts and all the programs. There'll be eight new programs. Rowan State has, health sciences are wheelhouse, and so we have probably more health science offerings than any other Tennessee border regions institution, or we're very close to it. And so we are, we formed a formal campaign cabinet. CEO of Covenant Health is, is on that. Dr. Lynn Massengale, another Loudoun County resident, is co-chairing that with Jim Vanderstee. And I know a couple of you heard my boss, President Chris Whaley, at Committee One Hundred recently. So we are just starting to fan out to the regions. We have been focused on the, what we call the ROI investors, those in healthcare that are gonna hire these graduates. But we're upsizing the programs because lord knows, we and everybody else around in an educational institution can still not possibly produce enough than what was a crisis before the pandemic and now has exacerbated that with the pandemic. And so we're trying to upsize and certainly want to maintain this as an anchor area of programming that Dr. Jenkins oversees for the college.
What, what, how much is like Covenant and UT Medics that are contributing?
Covenant Corporate provided the land on which this is built. That made this go forward probably sooner than it would have through the state process. Whenever we get prioritized by the Tennessee border regions, then we're up against UT and all the other state university system. And because they gifted ten acres of prime buildable land across the street from Park West Hospital, it made this happen. That and of course, our legislative.
I have two observations to share, and then I'll be done with it. I'm very reluctant to send Loudoun County money to Knox County. That would be number one. Secondly, I would think if you come back here in six months and say, all the other counties have contributed and they're on board and all that, I would have more of an interest. I don't want to be the first one and then wind up being the only one outside of Knox County that's putting money in something like this. I, I'm sure it's needed, and it's a fine thing, but.
Sure.
We have a lot of things, and fine things here in Loudoun County that need to be dealt with for eighty thousand dollars worth.
Well, let me, let me also point out, because Rowan State serves eight core counties plus Knox and Blunt for health sciences only, this is a gentleman's agreement with Mississippi State. Our presidents get along real well and travel to Nashville together sometimes, but this is, this is our charge by Tennessee border regions, and it's regional. The new facility, you'll notice in the brochure, has a simulation center, which is unlike any of its kind in most of the southeast. We know of one maybe in Mississippi and another in Florida, but this is still gonna be a notch above the rest. But I hear ya, and I definitely take that under advisement. This, the regional economic impact data in that brochure also cites Loudoun County, so it is a regional effort. So any student at Rowan State in health science should benefit from the simulations there, not to mention the fact that we have twenty to twenty-five a year from Loudoun County, every single year, with ninety-five to a hundred percent pass rate, getting employment at forty thousand plus. And so this is a regional thing. We know a lot of students, you know, drive from Loudoun County into this Knox Training Center as it is. And they'll be all the more.
I understand your concerns. Now, we're, I'm gonna have the same conversation with the city, that I'm gonna be with Tony Atkins tomorrow.
I know you moved dirt already.
Jeff Harris.
When do you start going vertical, and when's the completion date?
I think we're supposed to go vertical anytime, last I heard. December plus the wetness, plus the snow slowed that down.
And what's your completion date?
Completion date is summer of 2025. We think it'll be July of twenty-five, and then Pat gets to figure out how to move in and start classes gradually over that semester.
I think it's a phenomenal endeavor, and I, I would be for doing, contributing something, because it will come back to all of us when we need healthcare. And if you've had anybody in long-term healthcare lately, you will understand the tremendous need, the shortage of healthcare workers there are. And I applaud you for, for your project, because it is much needed, much needed.
We're a fast-growing county and state, and our healthcare needs are going to expand. So this is an investment in the future for all of our health, particularly as I look around, all of us getting older, and we will need a lot of healthcare.
I would point out Commissioner Quillen, that she does have a half million dollars that she can donate if she wants it. All by herself, she could give you a half million dollars.
Anyways-
I'm serious.
I had not committed already.
I'm serious.
If I had not committed already.
Are these all the ones that'll be housed at this new facility? Or what, what is going to be at the-
What page are you looking at, sir?
I'm sorry, page five, right-hand side.
Because I can pretty much tell you the ones that will be housed there. We will be having EMS there.
Okay.
We currently have three different options. We have EMS B, which is the basic, advanced, and we also do a permanent program. We'll be expanding our nursing program there. We will also be moving our respiratory care program to that facility. In addition, we are wanting to offer to develop some new programs, one of those being diagnostic medical semography ultrasound. And we're in the process of trying to get that up real early, doing the echocardiography is another portion of that. We're also wanting to do neurodiagnostic technology, and we're going to move polysomography over there, which we currently have. Am I getting them all, I think?
They're not listed. The new ones are not listed here. This is the percentage.
So those are, those are the programs. We've talked about a biomedical technology program as well. And so those are just the ones from Rowan State. And then TCAT Knoxville is also bringing some, some programs. Their surgical technology, their LPN program is there. Their demo assisting, I think, is there, so that phlebotomy will be with their, they're bringing phlebotomy, and we also have that with our continuing yet, because our continuing education component, which we now house at the Knox campus, if you've been there, it is a really small building, and we are busting in the seams. And so that, the continuing education component, will also be going to the new Knox campus so that we'll be able to meet the continuing education needs of the, of the healthcare community as well as the graduating new students.
You'll see in here that we estimate one in three of any healthcare provider in the Knox metro area has been through the doors of Rowan State, either at the beginning maybe of their degree or coming back for the continuing education. So that's as best we can estimate. We have one-year placement data, and we have TBR's ten-year and in between, but we know that even in that ten-year data, eighty percent of our graduates stay in the area in which they were trained.
I will come back on a monthly basis just to be available to answer any questions and updates. So you'll just see me, and if you have questions at the next meeting, I will be in the audience ready to answer them.
I think updates what other communities are doing would be helpful to, to give to other cities and counties.
Yeah, for that purpose, yeah.
I think it's great endeavor. I would never say no right now, but let's see where it goes. Come back on a monthly basis and tell us where you are.
Thank you.
Do you want, now, do you want the, at the next meeting, the public?
Nah, send us a letter.
Scott, do you have a card?
You don't have to come. Just send us a letter. Email, telegraph, whatever.
I'll, I'll, I'll contact, I'll put it, I'll send it to Buddy.
Got a few others.
Thank you for your honor.
I'll, I'll share with you.
Thank you.
If you have questions, I'm happy.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comments. Buddy Bradshaw, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. James. We can go ahead and remove two, A, as we discussed in budget. I'm going to do a bit more research on that.
Yep.
Uh, B is juvenile van, well, it's a van that's located currently at juvenile system. County Commission, whenever it evolved, the County Commission was there, allocated this van to the juvenile. Other departments include, not the least of which is our senior system center could use that. It's S, one that does anything. It is up to County Commission to reallocate it for a general county purpose and the Department of County Office of Defense and anybody, any county entity, but at that point, use it.
We'll put it on March fourth.
And they would just come check it out through purchasing or your office?
They'd come through Teresa Harrell. She's our-
The juvenile center doesn't use it no more. It was left over from a program they used to have. They called their, you know, I looked right straight to Harold up on that, but honestly, good as I looked to Harold. It was their outdoor program or something like that.
They used to go the way it was.
Uh?
It was outreach.
Outreach, something. They, they don't even do that program anymore, so.
They took them on a bicycle ride over there.
So, so as far as I know, the only one that ever uses Steve Harrell's when he takes the, when they have to go to their Nashville conference. So it just needs to be back here and used regularly for whomever else needs it.
Better than sitting here. We'll put it on March fourth, take a vote.
All right, I'll just be quick. I've been in Nashville the last two days on some, County Day on the Hill. Airline event for our one bill we're looking at for counties and cities to approve pilots. The language was in it, sixty thousand population or less. It went to sixty-five, then it went to a hundred, and it was at two hundred and fifty. So everybody wanted in on that one. I can send those out if anybody wants them. I'll be happy to copy them and send them out, but like I said, I feel like we got some work done in supporting counties across the state, not just Loudoun County for the last two days. So I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner James.
Thank you. The first one is a Tennessee National Resolution. I found out a little more information. In two thousand sixteen, Tennessee National applied for their boat docks. They asked for more. The NTVA told them the paperwork wasn't correct. So TBA told them, start from the first phase, and the first one is us agreeing to allow them to build the boat docks. And they wrote, uh, we've got a resolution, and it just pretty much says that we agree that it does, that we support it.
I have a question. Doesn't matter at all. Why did we have a say? When, when, when I apply for a boat dock, or John Doe might just apply for a boat dock, it doesn't come to us?
No. It's because it's a, from what she told me, it was a large marina.
Expansion.
So the water is in our county, and TBA wants to know that we approve or that we support it.
Okay.
It's something's passed.
You do whatever TBA tells you to do.
It's like TRDA, when we tried to expand our, TRDA since it's mass.
Yeah.
If TBA wasn't doing this, we'd be saying, by gosh, why don't TBA let us have some say so in this? How's it, the state shit?
I'm just curious why here, but not here.
That's exactly what- Well, I think the water's in the county.
I'm off.
The only thing I can come up with, but she said, I talked to, the lady's name is Carly Grace, and she said her next meeting, she would come and tell, tell us all about it, but I don't see the need.
No.
Van doesn't see the need.
There'll be any erosion issues?
Maybe.
Hey, Ripper Act takes care of that.
Ripper Act, yeah.
Ripper Act.
Is the inspector okay with this in the first district also?
Yeah, he's good with it.
Okay.
I like that haircut.
Okay, we'll put it on March fourth.
That's how you cut your hair when you're a inspector.
Okay.
March fourth.
The second one is a safe haven baby box. A million Chase has talked, me and Rosemary has talked. This box is installed in a fire department. Uh, hopefully, it never is used, but it gives the opportunity to somebody that wants to give up a child. That, instead of the dumpster we've all heard about, it gives them the opportunity to bring it to the fire department, place it in this box, and we take custody of it until DHS comes. So the, uh, the, the cost of the box, or not the, the money we're, Minchase is wanting to donate is twenty-one thousand dollars. That pays for the box and the construction of installing the box.
East Tennessee Foundation, where I'm employed, helped fund a box somewhere in North Knoxville.
Yes.
And I know it's been used at least once.
I've heard twice.
Okay.
There's been two surrenders in Knoxville.
Well, they were, would be the first responders anyway.
Oh, yeah.
So why not have it in a safe incubator, almost like an incubator?
It has to be monitored. There has to be an alarm system that's monitored twenty-four-sevens. There has to be a camera that's monitored on the inside. The outside is totally anon- anonymous. If we do this, then CASA has, I think they've agreed to pay for the annual charge for the alarm system and the monitoring.
You're using ARPA funds, right?
Yes.
And this is coming out of yours and Chase's ARPA funds? I just curious if Ms. Quillen contributed her ARPA funds to that one?
No.
No?
No, but I love the idea. I approach them with this.
She has a lot of good ideas, but she's going to get no money tonight.
I'm helping to spend their money, okay? It's a good thing, a great thing. We save one child's life.
Put it on March fourth.
Thank you, sir.
They don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Jenkins.
MOUs they were handed out beforehand, City of Lenore City had sent out one to Buddy back in December. Buddy had then sent it over to Bob Bowman to look it over. Bob had sent the, sent it back, so if you look at your page, everything, it's in pink on the side. Those were the concerns that Bob had had, number one being the, instead of being memorandum of understanding, he thinks that it needs to be an interlocal agreement. Lenore City accepts that change if the board's good with all that. Uh, the next one was, uh, let's see. It said this term needs to be defined, for example, any expense over five thousand dollars. So mechanical costs, whenever you enter into an agreement with somebody, types of things that we would be talking about because the city put a term limit of anything over fifteen thousand dollars, that, that's when the three entities would pitch in to help pay for the repairs of it. You're looking at the shooting range HVAC, you're looking, uh, like the burn box, the igniter and stuff like that, whatever the major cost in those may be, rooftops.
How's rooftop mechanic?
Maintenance of repair.
This is not going to be a one-time donation, and we're hooking into this thing forever.
Yeah.
Forever.
That one had it hurts a little bit.
What's the difference between the five thousand and fifteen thousand down on Bowman's comments?
He put it down as an example. They raised it to fifteen. Anything up to, if it's fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, ninety-nine cents, city's going to cover it. We're going to be taking care of the main maintenance of the building and the upkeep of everything. If anything above fifteen, fifteen thousand or above were to happen, then they're going to be asking each of the entities to pitch in to help repair it.
I have two questions, one from Ms. Rice. Will we let us spend, spend ARPA money, anything with recurring costs, and is this considered a recurring cost?
Well, that's not part of the donation that they gave out of their ARPA funds.
Or just a capital?
These, these costs that he's talking about would be in future years.
But we have to have the MOU to give them the million dollars. The MOU puts us on the hook for costs over fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
So I guess the question, do we have to have two resolutions, or do we have to have?
We don't have to have the MOU. This just kind of lays off that.
We do.
Well, this just kind of lays out some guidelines.
But the MOU, which is tied to ARPA, has put us on the hook for recurring costs.
But, but the MOU doesn't refer to the money that will be invested for these repairs coming from ARPA because they, the, the city, neither one of the cities can stipulate where the county is going to pay those funds.
I understand what he's saying. We're creating a, we're creating an entity that's going to require recurring funds. ARPA money can't be spent on anything that has recurring funds. I understand exactly what he's saying. I can separate the two, as you're saying.
Right.
We built the building. The continuing, uh, possibly recurring funds is a separate thing aside from the ARPA funds on the building. I, I can get to both sides. I can say only on both sides.
Yeah. And then also, this is what we're really good at, is going to end these interlocal agreements with no termination.
It's on, it's on the back. It's on number six. I don't, I, there's nothing, there's no terms. It just says termination.
Termination, and the way I understood it, if anybody wanted out at any time, all they had to do is say, I won't out.
It has to be written down that way.
Well, omit termination in its entirety is what's noted here. So, you know, I think there needs to be something in terms of termination because-
We got two.
We know how well that's going with, of course.
By the way, I understood that omit termination in its entirety was if you decided that you didn't want to continue in with the interlocal agreement. If you step out, you're no longer allowed to take part in using that facility.
That needs to be still out here somewhere because as of right now, there's nothing regarding termination in that.
In ten, twelve years from now, we all gone, nobody remembers. Somebody would say, how do we sign up a contract we can't get out of?
Well, I think language is being there as well. Not that I don't, I don't know, in no way, shape, or form, but you don't look protect the county's interest. I don't think it would happen, but you also don't want any of the other entities saying, we're done sharing.
Yeah, you can't just go walk around.
That warrants a little bit of discussion. I don't see why, maybe, I don't know if that would-
If this is going to be voted on in March, somebody needs to get all the language completely clear and written between, well between now and when we get here to vote.
As far as that goes, how would you like to see that?
Right off the bat, all these not, notations on the side need to be cleared up and put into the document. If it's going to be a, an interlocal agreement, it needs to be an interlocal agreement, not a memorandum of understanding. And I'm going, you know, I can't let things like that go. The city attorney has said on multiple occasions, interlocal agreements are not worth the paper they're written on. You might as well throw them in the trash. So if you've checked with Mr. Walter Johnson to make sure that this interlocal agreement will be worth more than the paper it's written on before we agree to it.
Well, it was written up as a memorandum of understanding.
And it's worth less than an interlocal agreement. Memorandum, that, those are nothing. So I just want you to get clarified with Walter Johnson tomorrow whether or not, and get back with us and let us know if an interlocal agreement is worth the paper it's written on because that's part of the lawsuit in the annexation is, we can't hold them to what it was because they're not worth anything, just a footnote. But whatever we're going to vote on, I don't have a problem with voting on it. Um, the, the maintenance thing's kind of a deal, but I'll be dead and gone before anything major happens hopefully on it. But this has to be cleaned up, written what the final document's going to be before I can vote on it. I can't, I couldn't vote on this document in March. It needs to say what it's going to say.
And that's the thing, is it, is there a reason we're pushing it back now, or can we wait a month or so?
Well, we need to get, we need to all get-
Right now.
December thirty-first. Are they building the building right now?
It's been corred, drilled. It's ready that it can move forward. Richard could actually probably answer some of these questions and help out.
You're not going to get the money until you reach certain milestones. We put three different steps in on all of these ARPA donations. So to answer Bill's question, is there a hurry?
Yeah.
There's not a rush because nobody's done, nobody's fixing to give them any money anyhow. But on the money question, we had this brief discussion at the Budget Committee, and I'm not gotten a clear answer yet. Uh, Richard and I talked about this the other day, and Don, Aaron and I have talked. We have to have the money spent or-
Obligated.
Obligated by the end of this year. Somebody somewhere in the world of ARPA money has said an MOU or an interlocal agreement. Either one will work for that, I guess. Will, 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 will work for an obligation. My statement to them the other day, and my question again tonight, how long is this interlocal agreement good for? We get two extra years of time, right, with an interlocal agreement? So if the money's not spent at the end of that two years, it goes back to the feds. So once we pass all these time zones, you did, you did, and I know Don said it'll be nearly all completely done by the end of this year. Well, good luck with that, but that's what Don said. They may do it, I don't know. But we have to know that ultimately, at the end of the road, we don't have to ship a million dollars back to Washington DC because we dropped the ball along the way. I, I don't know how you fix that.
See, and my thing with the maintenance, we have county departments with undertrained people that serve this county every day. And the reason why is because even my, my department, Richard's department, we have to go to Alcoa to get this training. And that, it's, it's hard on us. We have to do two days where we split our departments. If it, if it's five thousand dollars, we pay in ten years for an HVAC unit. Those county firefighters, deputies have gotten use out of this. They've gotten good training that only helps our citizens. So that's-
I'm not opposed to it all.
I'm not opposed to it, but the language has to be read.
Oh, I agree.
It has to say. Fifteen thousand.
I'm okay with fifteen thousand.
Well, I mean, I think what Ben's saying is, is all those little side notes here has to be incorporated into the-
It's got to be.
It's a law.
Yeah, and it will. I mean, that's what we're discussing. Are you all good with those changes?
Are you going to put fifteen thousand? Or we good with it? I think, you know, the police chiefs and the fire chiefs mark that out. I don't think scheduling-
As far as scheduling goes, fire chiefs, police chiefs, they'll work it out amongst themselves. And they have some little online that they'll be using as well.
And I can, myself and Richard, our, our guys trained together. We have an aut- We have an automatic aid agreement, so we have to train together.
Just like monotony exercise, there may be somebody from Sheriff's Department that was sick, or on vacation, come and train with somebody else.
I, I guess what, what we're doing with this is, these are the changes that Bob Bowman has recommended. And instead of incorporating all that into one document, we left it out here so you could see the things that he's.
I understand what it is. I'm just saying, between now, when I'm asked to vote on this, the final document has to be read.
How would you like, like, put in Loudoun County reserves its right to?
Are you to the termination part?
Remove our seven thirty days notice, sixty days notice.
Well, Bob said the parties need to address the rights to terminate and what happens to capital investment on the termination, of the terminated party upon withdrawal or termination.
But the capital investment will be gone.
Well, I agree. But Bob needs to guide us a little bit on that. I mean, none of us are attorneys.
Right.
So what is a good termination clause? How would you write that?
We can withdraw, we can withdraw, we could quit using it any, within thirty days' notice or something like that.
With no obligation of the.
If we've used it, then I don't see, I don't see how we could ever ask for.
I'll promise you, I'll promise you in the mid nineteen hundreds, everybody set right this, when they set up the EDA resolutions, oh, that looks good, that, I don't see a problem with that. It comes back to bite, so we just need to make sure we get it right this time.
Well, what, what does this commission want as far as?
I want Bob to write the termination part. Whatever will be the appropriate way to word the termination part.
Again, I think this is a great facility for all the first responders in the county. I just wanna make sure we're covering our tail ends.
Oh, I agree.
We don't wanna lose our money.
I couldn't vote on this.
No, not, not like it is. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw another nugget in here, I've already sent, Rosemary, I've sent to Richard in the past. This is a tiny spot, two and a half acres, two something acres like that, and that's a lot of stuff. Why would you not consider taking your fire training apparatus to Hotchus Valley to where we're building the new rescue squad building? Where we've got five acres, enormous amount of space, and space to grow and have more. This is no reflection on that, I, I'm fine with this, but rather than trying to jam everything up on that one tiny little lot up there, why would you not, cause we're gonna build the rescue squad building, it's coming, you know it's coming, the money's there, it's got to be done now. Is there any thought that that would make any sense?
Well, number one, there's a large gas line in rear of that structure.
I don't, I don't.
I don't think you want live fire back there.
Well, there's probably different places on five acres you could locate without getting.
That line runs, it splits the back of it. And there is a cap you have to maintain, so you can't build a road across it.
Well, but I'm, again, in five acres, there's bound to be in one spot you could put some, I'm just asking a question.
You don't have water up there.
We got water. East Rome County takes water down there, sure does.
Well, there's no hydrants up there.
I don't know about hydrants, but there's definitely water. That was another political fight years ago.
Soil samples and all that stuff that.
I'm just asking, I mean, you're gonna be jammed on top of each other where you're going, so. I'm not saying it has to be, or I'm not gonna vote, I'm just asking why we wouldn't put the fire training where the fire department's gonna be.
Not my call.
Well, you've got a pretty loud voice, you can probably make the call.
Well, I mean, uh, we're gonna use it, obviously. And if it's in Loudoun City, I'd use it in Loudoun City, if it's in Loudoun County, but if it's in Philadelphia, I'm gonna use it in Philadelphia.
Yeah.
Cause Sherbit's going to Alcoa.
I'm sure. Absolutely.
So, uh, I'm just, sort of like Bill, we're just little nuggets in this thing, and we see something that can potentially help this whole county, and we're on board with it. Every chief in this county has met on the fire training division side, and are a hundred percent for it. They voted for the certain model we're, we're, uh, trying to implement, and we're all on the same page, that's all I can say.
I just, I'm just curious.
Just curious.
What, what kind of this deal, what kind of termination language are we looking for?
I don't know.
After our term.
Ask Bob what it needs to say.
Just we all, we have the op, we have the option to leave, we're not gonna ask for money back.
No.
I don't know.
But we don't wanna be, we don't wanna be tied to the perpetual maintenance.
So we're just looking for an exit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you can walk away at any time.
Ter, terminate within thirty days after notice, sixty, I don't know.
We're going.
Well, it doesn't get us out of maintenance.
But it's the maintenance thing, but getting out, quick going's not it, the maintenance is what we got. And I'll just go ahead and warn every one of you right now, you can snicker and laugh all you want. You know, when you get to Lenore City, if Tony gets mad about something and cuts us off, there's nothing we can do about it. We have interlocal agreements all day long, it won't mean a thing, so just bear that in mind. If we don't pay his adequate facilities tax, or if we don't pay his, uh, whatever, uh, county can't use facility no more, you're done.
I just wouldn't foresee that happening. And this, this benefits the whole county and, and our, all of our firemen, policemen, our citizens, and I, I just wouldn't see somebody harming the whole county.
Okay. Yeah, it wouldn't have ever happened before, has it? Uh, you will check on with Walter Johnson about if an interlocal agreement is worth the paper it's written on. Could you give us a specific answer to that between now and when we vote?
I'll ask him.
Ask him, please do, I, I need it in writing if you put it in writing.
Well, I, I guess I'm gonna add a dumb comment to, to that. I mean, this investment between the city and the county, the Loudoun City, I mean, we all have ownership. There's no way to, to say that we all have ownership, it's not owned by Lenore City, it's not owned by.
Yeah, just cause it's up there doesn't mean they would have the right to.
The right to throw anybody out, I mean, we have the right to throw anybody out.
Okay. You know, it's against state law with whole documentation, a collection of paperwork in Lenore City. When we're doing the AFT, by law, they have to submit that paperwork to Chip Miller's office. For three months, he said, do not send the paperwork to Chip Miller's office. So don't tell me he can't do it.
But, I mean, there has to be some kind of, it's owned, I mean, it's owned by three entities.
I'm just giving you a heads up and a warning.
If you, if you own it, then you are tied to that maintenance forever.
Then you're in maintenance forever, that's exactly right.
Unless you opt in.
No, if you own it, it's yours. If you put it in there, that, it's owned by the three entities.
I don't think it says that.
No, it's not, no, that's like Gary was saying.
Yeah.
Gary, Gary said we do own it.
Yeah, if we do own it, then we're tied forever. If you don't own it, and you have an agreement, then you're only tied until you don't wanna be tied.
What, whatever the rub may be, I, I, I don't have a rub, I'm government and Loudoun County's government. I don't know, that, that, the police, the sheriff's department, law enforcement, fire department. I, I.
I'm not.
Well, I'm.
So there wasn't a meeting in Loudoun today? Long that long?
The city of Loudoun and the county and Lenore City own it together.
Wasn't meeting in Loudoun today with law enforcement or anything?
Huh?
I don't have a rub, I'm, you know, we're getting rid of spending a million dollars of the county taxpayer money. So I, I'm just looking for a way to protect our investment.
Sure.
And when we're, and when we're all gone, I mean, chief, he's gonna retire. Chief's gonna retire. When we're all gone, they're all gone, we, that, that arrangement still has to be there.
Here's the bottom line. I think it's a great idea.
I do too.
Especially for public safety. Clean up the language, get Bob to look it over, see if we can make it back on March fourth.
I'll lock it up while I can, and I'll send Bob to finish it and get it sent back out.
I think everybody behind this table supports this.
One hundred percent.
But we have to have the language to protect Loudoun County. We've seen too many things over the years, so we're all for it, just make the language work.
That's it. Okay. So are we gonna vote on this March fourth, or are we gonna wait?
If we get this cleaned up, and I don't want it before I get to the table Monday on March fourth, I want it way ahead of time, buddy.
Again, I, I would, I apologize, I'd have put my hand on the Bible before budget meetings, before I sent that thing out. But, but I didn't, that's all made, I apologize.
Okay. Tighten it up, we'll put it on March fourth if you make it, if not, we'll have to go off to the next one.
Yep. Well, hopefully it'll get done, I mean, I don't think we need to, our project.
No.
What's, we're having enough of, there's enough to tap on.
I wanna thank the chief out here for all of his work down there at Fort Loudoun Marina for that tragedy during the snowstorm. Thank you.
All I saw him do was stand by the truck where he was on that.
Well, he's.
It's his job.
Somebody's gonna stay.
We'll call you next time, Ben, come on that.
I offered that night, and I said, hey, wait, I said, I'm not going.
Now he showed up on his little wagon.
Dan?
Thank you.
He has the five cross pugles on his collar, he owns it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, number five, I'm going to, uh, uh, push till next month, waiting on some information from the state of Tennessee on a couple items pertaining to this one. And just if anybody wanna know what it was, it's a matter of who's doing the subdivision plating approvals in the UGBs. Uh, that's in the county, outside the cities, but in the city's UGB, Loudoun and Lenore City. Right now, Loudoun was doing it, then they quit doing it, and then they're back to doing it, is that what Jim said? Uh, Ty Rouse Society wanted to do it again, anyhow, I think Loudoun's back to doing it. Lenore City's doing it, and we don't know anything that's happening, but it, it goes by county specs and regs, but we don't know what's happening. So I gotta get some more information from the state, and I'll bring it back next month, so.
Okay, we'll put it off.
You rest that one aside.
So this, this, I had a phone call about this today. Is this just for UGB projects?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be in the UGB outside of the city limits.
Right now, if somebody walks in here and they wanna do the plat of some kind, and it's in the UGB in Lenore City or Loudoun, Jim sends them to Lenore City or Loudoun. Then Lenore City and Loudoun have to know what our requirements are in order to tell them what's doing. And we've slipped a cog a time or two, and we've had things happen in the county and the UGBs that didn't meet the ci, the county standards, but met the city standards. Public chapter eleven oh one pretty clearly says, if the county doesn't have planning, the cities are to do it. Well, obviously Loudoun County has planning, so in some of our minds interpretation, it shouldn't be going to the cities anyhow. It should be handled here because it is county property. UGB is not city limits, that's your potential city limit, so I'll get more information, we'll, we'll pick it back up next month.
Fair enough. Commissioner Waller.
Agenda document quality, um, and it's not an issue here.
It's Tammy, it's an.
It's all Tammy. It's not rare, I, I don't know if one example is the issue here, but I know with other, uh, departments and, and boards, we get some, uh, documents that you can't even read. I'll just use Planted as an example. The last packet had a PDF of, of the school, couldn't see anything on it. So I want to, I wish Jim was still here, but, um, specifically for the Planted Office, make sure anyone who submits a plat or a reason or any, any document that's gonna be put in the packet is a high-quality PDF. It also includes the Planted Office or Tammy, whoever, learning how to combine files, not just Xeroxing and then putting it in. It's actually combining PDFs into one document, not, like I said, not photocopying and scanning them in, you know, photocopy, it's gotta be.
She generally has whatever is sent from Planted. So it needs to start right there in the Planted Office.
Yeah, so.
Cause she puts what comes to her.
Right.
It's not, it's not, I just try to be nice.
Are you going to, uh, you need to vote on something, or?
Maybe, I don't know.
Ask Jim.
Talk to Jim, if we need to vote, we'll vote, but, um, just wanna make sure that.
We can read what we get.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
But that would require the applicant to submit the proper documentation. I'm not saying this is on Jim.
No, this is developed, the developer's the one who has to do this, instead of bringing in a. And they've always got them, they've, they have to have the good plot of stuff.
They do have the big ones, but Jim's office shouldn't have to be going in, scanning it's there.
Jim shouldn't have to.
They should come in, at, well, should come in with a thumb drive that hands off the PDF and the resolution.
Sometimes too, our systems don't have enough capacity to hold those large files.
Sure.
Something you probably run into and I run into all the time. Even just with the small amount of stuff I do, I know she has to run into it. Our systems don't hold enough capacity of big files. Sometimes I, if I have a big packet, I have to break it up in four sections and send it to IT. That's a lot of extra work.
I think here's a twenty-five meg, if you can only see it. That's not very much when it comes to.
Well, the solution for that is put it into a Dropbox and send the link.
Yeah.
But, you know.
My generation don't do Dropbox.
This is not an IT class, but I'm saying.
Nor iCloud, I don't know nothing about that.
I'll take the training if you wanna come. And I'll take the class and we'll take you to lunch, how's that?
Dropbox, no hourly.
We don't do that.
No flim flames or zits orgs.
Too bad you're already been offered like, we're going to lunch.
It might be a peanut butter sandwich.
Done, thank you.
Erin, you're up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. These are the recommendations by the budget committee. The first one is three hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for courthouse alternates. Two hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-six will be appropriated from Fund One Twelve, which is the courthouse jail maintenance fund, and fifty-five thousand three hundred and ninety-nine from ARPA.
How much from ARPA?
Fifty-five thousand three hundred and ninety-nine.
And why does that leave ARPA balance fat?
Do not say that loud.
Okay, don't say that loud.
About four hundred thousand, about four hundred and twenty thousand.
I didn't bring my budget stuff in.
Well, what are we looking at? Is somebody gonna come explain to us why, like, why do we ask?
Did they get, did they get a copy of it?
The first, well, cause Lisa had it, the first set out of the one twelve is stuff that has just been delayed purchasing, it's just went up that much.
We approved it last year.
Yeah, it's been, it's been.
Do you have a copy of it? Uh, Erin?
Um, second wave is some, uh, cover.
It's very small.
Well, let me just.
And it's seven covers going up the stairwell, up the firescape, uh, steel, stainless steel, the walls protect them where they don't kick the walls in and the hole in sales.
Did we approve that?
Yeah.
Approve the stairwell?
We did fifteen, seventeen and eighteen. No, we did not do fifteen, seventeen and eighteen, those were three we did not approve.
That's true.
Now, this don't look like the one we had at budget.
Well, the only difference is it's smaller and it's, it's stacked out differently, that's all. But this is the one that Matt sent me. It's just Lisa made her.
And this is all blue that we're being asked to do, right?
Yes.
Blue?
Yeah, on, under the blue portion.
No, blue's already done.
Three, three through thirteen, three through thirteen was voted on last year at the hundred eighty-three thousand sixty-four dollars. So we had to add to, because of the increase, we had to add eighty-five thousand five hundred and twelve dollars.
That, that's ship's sale.
That's due to inflation.
That's due to the inflation.
Because the insurance company moves so slow.
And then on the second one, we did not approve, what, fifteen?
Fifteen, seventeen and eighteen.
Fifteen, seventeen and eighteen took away, that made fifty-five thousand dollars of new improvements that we approved out of ARPA money.
And then eight, so it's eighty-five plus the fifty-five, which is about a hundred and ten.
Yes, sir.
That's all it is.
That's all it is.
Well, plus the hundred eighty-three, the hundred and eighty-three was approved last year, but it hasn't been reapprived.
We gotta redo it.
Got you, okay.
I'm sorry, I should've said that, I apologize.
It's not new money.
Well.
It's money that's been sitting in the back.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We good?
I'm good.
Okay, all right. The second recommendation was to approve the, uh, twenty-twenty-five pathway grant for the libraries, we have matching funds. Um, also recommended is two additional full-time employees at the county clerk's office and one part-time employee at the county clerk's office to begin as of March fifth. Um, it's approximately a twenty-three thousand dollar increase in current year. And then, uh, the recommendation for the ARPA funds from the first district to go towards the baby box of, uh, twenty-one thousand dollars, that, that was a recommendation to go to Loudoun City on behalf of the Loudoun City Fire Department. And then we have, uh.
Hold on.
You good, you got a question?
Uh-uh.
Oh.
Rarely.
Just making sure.
If I do, I'll know the answer before I ask.
Because I heard you speaking and.
Clear my throat. You really, you really wanna take on this file?
Move, move it right along.
Do you really wanna take this file on?
All right, so, so the next one is, um, County General Fund one oh one amendments. There is a line adjustment of twelve hundred dollars from uniforms to other equipment in the election budget, but it's just a line adjustment, so it's just movement within the budget. There's a hundred and fifty dollars that's moving from other contracted services to licenses and animal control. Once again, it's just movement within the budget, that's County General. In the ARPA funds, oh, and the County General will also include the adjustment for the county clerk's new positions. Okay? And then in the ARPA fund, it'll be the, the donation, are you good, you good? Okay, all right. It'll be the contribution from the first district at twenty-one thousand for the baby box. In the highway fund, one thirty-one, well, there's a few different things. There's two hundred dollars going into three forty-nine, bring three thousand. There's two hundred dollars going into three forty-nine, three, three thousand going into three ninety-nine, other contracted services, and a decrease of two hundred dollars in seven nineteen, which is office equipment. There's a decrease of ten thousand dollars in road signs, an increase of four thousand dollars in heavy equipment parts, and an increase of thirty thousand dollars in tires, but none of these items will have an effect on the fund balance. And then in general purpose school fund, one forty-one, there's an increase to the revenue of two hundred and ninety-one thousand thirty-six dollars and an increase to the expenses by a hundred and eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Overall, the effect on the fund balance is an increase of usage of a hundred and three thousand ninety-six dollars. In school federal project funds, there was no overall, uh, effect on the fund balance. In Fund One Forty-three, which is cafeteria school fund, there is an increase to the revenue and expenses by a hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars, which has no effect on the fund balance. And then in capital project, general capital projects fund one seventy-one, there is an amendment to approve the transfer in of one point, a little more than one point two million dollars for the sale at Center Seventy-Five lots seven and eight. And then there's an amendment to approve the purchase of the building for the new county clerk's office of one million eighty-five thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. Those are gonna be all the amendments. Then, there was recommendations by the Capital Projects Committee of thirty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars for computers and scanners at Circuit and General Sessions and eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars at the county clerk for a new server. Now, here's the last thing, everybody received one of these great books. Now, this is an annual debt report, each of you received one except for the budget committee because they received one at the meeting, okay? Now, I'm gonna tell you just a few things about this book, I'll try to make it quick, okay, y'all just stick with me. It's just a couple of pages. Really?
I didn't say no for my time, I was filmed.
Okay, all right, here's the debt report, this report includes the debt management policy in section one. The debt man- management policy was passed on December fifth, two thousand and eleven. It provides guidance on how the county plans to manage its debt, okay? Section two is a copy of our financial advisory agreement with Cumberland Securities. Section three includes the county's latest bond rating. This rating was declared by Middy's Investor Service as part of debt issued on jail renovation. At that time, the county's rating was double A two. The information from Middy's includes factors that can affect the county's rating either positively or negatively. This is a good report for you to read, there's just a little bit of information in there. Um, section four, this is a report that's included in the audit, so it shows the schedule changes in long-term notes and other loans and bonds from the June thirtieth audit from two thousand and twenty-two. It, uh, reflects the county's total debt as of July first, two thousand and twenty-one, and the remaining debt as of June thirtieth, twenty, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. And the next section, I'm gonna spend a little more time here. Come on, y'all, y'all have to love this stuff, I mean, it's awesome, you need to read over this stuff, it's good for you. Okay, the next section of the report is section five. This includes information on the general debt service fund. This fund is used to pay debt issued on behalf of the county, such as the jail renovat- renovation. The first page in this section includes a multi-year budget. Okay? You good?
That was a bad sneak.
At the top of the page, you can see the fiscal years across the top of the page. And then, uh, you can see the beginning fund balance, and then you can see the property tax penny, the value of it, and how many property tax pennies are currently in this fund, okay? Then you can see the budgeted revenue and the budgeted expenses, and then at the bottom, you can see the effect on the fund balance. It has been the county's practice to end a fiscal year with enough in its fund balance to cover the debt in the next year. The debt payments in the next year, okay? Does that make sense?
Yes, makes sense.
It's very important to know that. All right. After this multi-year debt budget, there's amortization schedules that came from Cumberland, our financial advisor, and so you can look through those, that has a lot of good information also. And then in section six is the education debt service fund. This is the debt that is issued on behalf of the schools. There's a debt budget, a multi-year debt budget for them that's laid out exactly the same way. The, the county's practice is to end the fund balance in one year that will cover the debt in the next year, okay? So, the next schedule is the combined outstanding debt. So, this includes the county's debt and the school's debt, okay? That's in section seven. In section eight, there are benchmark comparisons, Loudoun County's been very good in this component. In section nine, this is possible future consideration. So, this includes some debt schedules for a hundred million dollars.
Oh, my.
This includes some debt schedules that have a baseline of a hundred million dollars if you decide to fund the new schools, okay? Any questions?
And, and the other projects tied to it.
Yes, there are additional projects that I believe the schools will be asking for, but it, it's all dependent upon.
Are you going, are you going to hit this now before you turn the page?
Phil- Philadelphia and Greenback, as well as the potential new school, we're all, and there's, I think there's a big section of the new school, there are some different projects on each of the eligible campuses that are being considered.
But this, this hundred million dollars is just a baseline for you to see how much would be needed in the debt fund to cover the debt each year. This is not stating that, that, that those projects are gonna be a hundred million dollars.
No, this is stating those projects are gonna be a hundred and eleven million dollars. Her, her little debt schedule don't even go up as high as we need to go right here.
It does not, this is a baseline, so you've got a twenty-five year and a thirty year. Just, just some information you need to be aware of, and I believe that's all, thank you.
So, that's it?
That's it.
That's it, okay.
Anything else?
Very little big game if you go in five, four, two, and thirty, over twenty-five.
This, the budget committee was presenting this tonight by the Board of Education. I think you got everybody a copy, did you? So, you can see how they explained to us, it's broken down by campus, by need, by what the Board of Education has approved. And you can see that the total amount is a hundred and eleven million dollars, but then you need to go to the bottom and add another three point eight million dollars to that, because all these other things somehow don't fit in these categories up here. So, it's a total of about a hundred and fifteen million dollars, all we get. And at some point in time, in the very near future, our budget process is going to begin, April the seventh. And by the end of this budget cycle, by the last Monday of June, we will be faced with the option of voting for a property tax increase to fund this building program. However much, either none, or however much we approve, would determine how many of these projects are done. You can, everybody can simply do the math, and you can tell if you eliminate this, that, and the other, of course, the cost goes down. Uh, this is simply what the Board of Education has submitted as their, their needs and their wants. So, it'll be up to us, the buck starts with us from this point and nothing.
Did they submit numbers, like student numbers, to, um, justify all of?
You'll have to take that up with them, I won't be voting on student numbers.
So, they didn't present that to you all at the budget?
Not today, no, we've seen all that many times, but as far as that, I, they were told today that, you know, that we're not the Board of Education, we're the county commission, it's their job that this is a need, and it's gonna be their job to explain it to the Loudoun County voters, Loudoun County citizens, that this is a need that the Loudoun County Board of Education has. And I think Mike Garren stated it was, well, if we don't do this, then somebody needs to come up with an alternative. Where do we put the kids if we don't have a school? So, that's out of our hands.
If we flood the cities with, with people, and then we wonder why we need a new school.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, there, there is no mystery what the problem is.
Our cities is fine, I mean, our high school, we've got room for growth, I know that, so I don't know where all the kids are coming from.
All right, Gigi Barker, it's one way one month and one way the next month, it keeps changing.
Keeps changing.
Yeah, one day she can take two or three hundred, five hundred more kids, the next day we gotta do an addition because we're out of space.
Tomorrow is, I'm throwing twelve kindergarten out, y'all need to go hire a teacher.
Yeah.
I'm not saying I'm for it, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm not supporting it, I'm not not supporting it, but these are just the realities that are, that are coming at us. By the last month in June, last Monday in June, this body will be faced with a, a decision of whether or not to vote for a property tax increase that would fund all or a portion of this, this project.
If we were to fund the four hundred and fifteen, how much of a property tax increase would that be?
When we probably get it whittled down to what it is, thirty cents is a real good benchmark. Uh, they're gonna have to work on their end a little bit. Thirty cents will, thirty cents will generate six point two million dollars a year in additional funding. The debt service on a hundred million dollars is seven million, is that right? Okay.
Listen, I have not calculated those numbers, but in your book, in the last section.
Section nine.
At, in section nine, if you look at the top of these schedules, it'll show you how many pennies are needed so that the fund balance ends to pay for the debt in the next year. It shows you, the blue is twenty-five years, the orange is thirty years, okay?
A rural debt penny has a value of two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Two oh six, one sixty-four, is the current value.
In our, in our last budget cycle, the one you gave me is two ten, but anyhow, we'll not quibble over a thousand dollars.
Really?
I can show you in a minute.
Okay.
So, but a general fund penny is worth two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
I don't have that written.
Okay, it is, go ahead and rest assured it is. But because Linnor City does not pay the rural decks, rural debt pennies, that's why it's only worth two ten. And, and to put another argument to rest, if there is a property tax increase to build the schools, Linnor City residents do not pay it. Their rate would then be forty-three cents, if we did thirty cents, their rate would be forty-three cents less than the county's. Loudoun City will pay one hundred percent because they don't have a school system.
And to help you out, Fan, June twenty-fourth at six o'clock will be the night you meet that.
I'm out of town then.
I think you all need to be here, it's very important.
I'll be there.
Okay.
I'm done.
Anything else?
Go on.
We'll go for a German. Yeah, I'll consider it a German.